Okay, we're ready to go with the roll call if you want to get started.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote please?
Commissioner Born, Commissioner Hofrey.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Clayton.
Here.
Commissioner Depler. Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Rubus.
Here.
Chair Beatty. Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
And Mayor Gattano.
Hey, well, Ms. Burdick, does the city have any opening meetings, opening responses, comments?
Well, Madam Chair, first of all, I'd like to thank the five of you for coming out on Zoom tonight and participating. More importantly, just being flexible in how we handled the meeting tonight with the inclement weather. I know the petitioner and petitioner's representative certainly appreciate the the extra effort. Without it, the next meeting is in mid-January, so it's a long stretch between now and then. So thank you all. Madam Chair, that's all I have to start with.
Okay, is the petitioner here today?
Yes, Travis just promoted Mr. Burding and Mr. Jockerson.
Okay, Mr., would they like to present?
Well, Madam Chair, could I just do a couple of overviews?
Yes, yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. Tonight, the department via the petitioner and petitioner's engineering team have provided to you a number of items relative to Ashley Grove. Ashley Grove is a 12-lot new subdivision in Town Center. It's situated between West Avenue on the west side and Center Avenue on the east side, south of Manchester Road. That packet of information that has been prepared by the engineering team includes the plan sheets, the comment letter from the Department of Planning and Public Works, geotechnical report, the utility letters, and then any agency letters applicable and necessary for the project. One item that we did receive that we did not provide per se is the Phase One Environmental Assessment. It was just over 340 pages or so. And so we just thought if you'd like to copy, or if you'd like to come in and see it, it's certainly available. So that's the packet of information. The plan set contains a number of items, including the site plan, the grading plan, public space plan, the resource plan, and the site distance study. And as attachments, the tree stand delineation and the landscape plan. So it's a very complete package. And just a few quick facts. This went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, obviously, and received a favorable recommendation. A number of key components related to the common boundary of this property to the northern property of Stone Mill Subdivision. The residents in Stone Mill Subdivision wanted comparable lot sizes and widths and side entry garages. Along with that, they requested a generous landscape buffer. I think you'll see all of those were achieved. Along with that, the major issue that came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately was resolved by City Council was whether the new internal street would be a through street or end at Center Avenue in a T-turnaround or a modified cul-de-sac. And as you can see by the plan set, City Council decided that a through-street in Town Center, where connectivity is promoted, was the best approach. There's a number of items relating to the public space plan, the landscape plan, and the dynamics or the components of the lots themselves, widths, setbacks, depths. That certainly, if you have questions, the department can answer those. And with that, if there are any questions regarding the package of information you received or any of the items from the zoning process that you have questions about, Mr. Newberry, and I'd be glad to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Burdick, I do have a question for you, and that is the geotechnical study is, that's when you said that is actually included in all of this? I guess because it's digital? Is that the one you said you didn't think that was attached?
No, it's the Phase One Environmental Assessment. What we ask, or what I should say.
That's there. That is there.
Yep, the city wants to ensure that at least at a minimum level, there's been an assessment of any environmental history, whether it be a transformer that blew up and put PCBs out or anything along those lines. So we asked for a Phase One Environmental Assessment. If it justifies, then you move to a Phase Two Environmental Assessment. And again, it's a lengthy document because it's a lot of inquiries to different entities and they submit a lot of paper back. So if, again, you want to see it, or if we can somehow get it to you via one of the transfers programs, we'll be glad to do it.
Okay, would the petitioner like to speak?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. My name is Brian Jockers. I'm with JH Barrow Land Development, representing Prestige Custom Homes, the home builder. And I also have on Mike Burding, who's the engineer with Sterling Engineering for the project. Joe did a great job, as always, of describing the project. So really, we're here to just answer any questions that the Subcommittee may have on the proposed site development plan in front of you all. I will say, I think the site development plan, there has not been any significant changes from the preliminary development plan that was approved previously. So we've kept everything the same, 12 lots, one, Lot One being the existing lot, so 11 proposed lots. So we're here to, happy to answer any questions you all have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Any comments?
Mr. Rubus.
Mr. Rubus?
Okay. The last time we discussed this, we were talking about 12 lots versus 11 lots. Where are we dealing, are we dealing with 12 lots or 11 lots?
What the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, Mr. Rubus, was 11 new lots and the retention of one lot. And so the current owner of the five-acre parcel of ground is staying, so to speak, on the property. And Travis is kind of highlighting where his home is at this time. And it'll be put on a new lot. And then there'll be 11 new single-family dwellings on individual lots that Prestige Homes, as Mr. Jockers mentioned, will be developing. So 12 in total, 11 new, one existing.
Well, I have a question. In one of these drawings I'm looking at, let me tell you what page it is. It's page seven of 12 of the site development plan, and it has a washout station and worker equipment. That's just temporary, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's the stormwater pollution prevention plan. And so they'll do some initial installation of some of the, at least the one basin as part of the initial grading. That'll be the temporary silt basin. And then as they develop the site, we require a washdown area and then protections around future area inlets, curb inlets, et cetera. And so, yes, it's all temporary. As they build out and get ground cover established, all of that stuff can go away.
Okay, and then as far as the sediment basin at the other side, where all the water is supposed to dump into, that is a detention or a retention?
And again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Jockerson or Mr. Burding, but it will be a bio-retention, as I understand, in its ultimate configuration.
Because on the plan, it says it's a detention pond.
Yes, it's dry versus wet, so it won't be a pond, I guess, is what it boils down to, Ms. Hofrey.
So in theory, it should empty after each time it fills. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then my final question for me personally is, do we not get to see any, like, street views of the houses or anything like that?
We can certainly ask Mr. Jockerson and Mr. Burding that if Prestige Homes can provide some prior to the final action, which will be at the January meeting. And then we can circulate them around before the meeting, so you can have time to look at them.
That would be nice, just to kind of see what we're dealing with here. And then the public space behind those four lots, I'm sorry, I'm looking at two different computers, so I can make sure I can zoom in and out easily. The public space behind is just going to be grass and open area?
Yes, the common ground will basically double as public space. So a percentage of it is, can be calculated toward the required public space. And they are adding a few amenities. There'll be a trail network around the basin. And then there's a couple of park benches that are in association with it. And from that perspective, also, there's landscaping that'll be along West Avenue and within the basin itself, because it'll provide water quality treatment.
Okay.
All in all, that area is really going to be passive, Ms. Hofrey.
Oh, I see the asphalt path, okay. And that will just connect to the street, correct?
Yes, and then into the sidewalk network. That's part of New College Avenue, West Avenue, which actually, then you can take east over to Wildwood Square, the Community College, the YMCA, and east via Manchester Road to Town Center. So a nice connectivity.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, Mr. Burdick. Does anyone have any other questions? Do we need a recommendation, Mr. Burdick?
Yes, if the committee would be willing to, the department would respectfully request of the members a motion and second with a voice vote to authorize the department to proceed forward with a recommendation report in favor of the development.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Marshall, do we have a second? Mr. Clayton, do you need a roll call vote, Mr. Newberry?
Does that motion include this, is this the recommendation report here? First review of the site development plan package for Ashley Grove Residential Subdivision?
No, sir. Mr. Newberry and I'll prepare a specific report for that purpose. So that is.
All these are part of the.
Yes.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, we can do a roll call. Travis.
We're ready.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, ready. Go ahead, Mr. Newberry.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes or no?
Mr. Rubus?
Yes, he said yes.
Yes.
Chair Hofrey?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
I think that was everybody. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, I guess I should have asked, were there any public comments, but I didn't. I didn't think to. Anybody?
Well, Madam Chair, there are two attendees. If any of the attendees have any questions, if you could use the raise hand feature, we'll promote you to the panelist. I see none, ma'am.
Okay, so do you have any closing remarks?
Again, to the committee members, thanks so much for squeezing us in and doing Zoom versus in-person. We appreciate it. And we'll see you in about 15 minutes at 6:30 PM for the regular meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that a motion.
Mr. Rubus, a second? Anybody? Mr. Marshall? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Okay, see you 6:30.
Thanks again, everybody.
Thank you.
How's it going everyone? Sorry I missed the site plan meeting.
No problem.
I remember seeing the notice about it and then all of a sudden I remembered it at like 6:15.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have a favor to ask tonight.
Yeah.
When we get to the third public hearing which deals with the waiver request for Lombardo Homes. We have a gentleman in attendance in the council chambers. Could we ask him to speak first?
Okay.
And then go to the Zoom and the attendees there.
All right. Yeah, let me make a note of that so I don't forget.
Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
Like before we even start talking about it?
No, just when we open it for public comment.
Okay.
If you could have him speak first.
Yeah.
The light keeps going off in there, so I don't want.
I've noticed that.
So, so yeah, the sooner we can accommodate him, the better. Thank you.
You're welcome. And sorry about the site plan. I, that one totally slipped my head. I've been sitting at my computer. All, most of the last hour and I just, yeah. If you hadn't sent me a message, I would have hopped on, but oh well.
Well, we, I apologize. We kind of were and kind of rolling with the punches tonight. And if you have any questions on the plan set or anything along those lines, just let Travis or I know.
Okay. Yeah, I, I do have one, but I'll, I'll maybe call one of you tomorrow to talk about it.
Or just send us an email and then we can respond and because your question may be a question the other committee members would have liked to hear, so.
Okay. Um, yeah. Like, I don't know, I, I would kind of like it if we didn't put the gate across the one entrance.
Got it solved.
Oh, they're, they took it down?
City Council wanted a three street, so.
Good for city council. Yeah, I mean, we, we've let all of our streets go through on this side of Manchester. No reason not to have one going all the way as far east as we can on the south side. Better for kids.
And city council was like, this is just going to create a headache. And so decided the likelihood of cut through traffic is minimal.
Right.
So we went ahead and so it's a through street. It won't, it'll be the last connection, the final two homes. That's when it will finally make the connection. Up till then, during the construction period, access will be limited to West Avenue.
Now, that's understandable. That's how they did it with my street when they expanded it. So, no, I, I, I get that. Keep the construction traffic on west. Yeah. No, that's reasonable. And let's see here, it looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We got eight, so we've got a quorum and it's 6:32, so I guess we can go ahead and get started.
Sounds good, sir. Thank you.
All right. So, um, let me move my screens around and I'd like to call the December 1st meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Uh, tonight on the agenda, we have three public hearings, two letters of recommendation, one information report, and three other items. Um, I appreciate everyone accommodating the Zoom tonight, um, due to the inclement weather and, um, we'll try to minimize the disruptions beyond that, but thank you to everyone who's in attendance. Um, and let me get a roll call of commission members, please.
Commissioner Bourne, Commissioner Humphrey.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Clayton.
Here.
Commissioner Depler.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Rubus.
Here.
Chair Beatty.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
And Mayor Garitano.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Oh. Um, let's see. Can I get a approval of the minutes from the November 3rd meeting, please?
Don't move.
All right. Motion to approve by Councilman Marshall. There's a second, second by Commissioner Clayton. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. Motion passes. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to sign the copy and drop it off to you?
I'll contact you tomorrow, Mr. Rubus. Thank you.
All right. Um, let's hear, does the Department of Planning have any opening comments?
Yes, I do, sir. Very briefly, uh, to, as you mentioned, I want to thank everybody for the quick pivot to a virtual meeting. It's much appreciated on the part of the commission members and the city attorney and others. And I do want to also thank the attendees. Hopefully we got the word out in enough time, so it wasn't much of an inconvenience, but we sure do appreciate it. And Mr. Chair, with that, I'll close and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, so, uh, let's see here. We'll open with, uh, public comments. Um, if you want to speak on any of the three public hearings, uh, now is not the time, but if you want to speak on any other agenda item, um, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom and someone, uh, will, uh, and Travis will, uh, promote you to a panelist and, uh, let you speak. Do we have in, let's hear, and don't see any so far, but I'll give them a minute here. All right, I'm, I'm not seeing any, so I guess we'll move on to the public hearing unless there are any objections. Oh, but there we do have one.
I'll go ahead and let, um, Neil Shot in.
All right.
Should we accept the prompt or dissent?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Terry Shaw. I live at 18903 St. Albans Road. And, uh, I was just here for the Chiluli portion of the meeting. So I just want.
Okay, that is part of a pu, the public hearing. So, um, when, that's probably coming up next, but we'll let you speak on it at that time.
Thank you very much.
But thank you. All right. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Newberry, any other raised hands?
I do not see any, uh, on Zoom.
And I'm not seeing any either, so, um, all right. So at this point, we'll close the public comments and move on to our public hearing. Um, so in the city, in the city of Wildwood, public hearings are truly intended to accept comments and questions concerning these posted items. Since these requests are being presented at a public hearing, no action is planned on these items tonight and consideration of them is to be taken no earlier than the January 2026 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This approach ensures the members of the commission will hear all opinions before taking any action. The city's Department of Planning will address the comments, questions, and concerns that are raised tonight and include them as part of its formal recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those in attendance via the Zoom webinar platform should use the raise hand feature to indicate you wish to speak at these hearings. A team member will add you to the list of speakers, which will then be communicated to me as chair, and I will invite you to speak when it is your turn. For those in attendance at City Hall, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. And you will invite, be invited to speak when it is your turn. The commission will allow all parties adequate time to present their position. As outlined in the commission's adopted public hearing guidelines, those individuals representing themselves will be allocated three minutes to speak. Speakers who are designated as a group speaker, representing a group of more than five individuals or a trustee of a subdivision, will be allocated five minutes to speak. In addition, information on these items can be found on the city's website at www.cityofwildwood.com. The commission would like to thank you for your cooperation and participation at tonight's hearings. Um, so first on the agenda, um, PZ 14-25, um, I guess, Mr. Newberry?
PZ 14-25 Chiluli care of Paul Merz, 46C Wash, Washington, Worthington, excuse me. Access Drive, Maryland Heights, Missouri, 63043. A request for a conditional use permit, CUP and FPNU floodplain non-urban residence district and INU non-urban residence district to accommodate a requested additional use of the subject property, which is located on the south side of St. Albans Road, west of State Route 100, street address 18944, St. Albans Road, St. Louis County, locator number 23Y 220108, and over five acres in size for the purposes of authorizing a sales room, retail, and wholesale in conjunction with the existing farm, gardens, plant nurseries, cultivated lands, and greenhouses, Ward 6.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich.
Mr. Chair, since this is a request for a conditional use permit, the existing zoning district designations, the department would like to enter into the record the following items. First, the city's charter. Second, the zoning ordinance, chapter 415 of the municipal code, specifically to chapter 415 500, which deals with conditional use permits. The file that has been developed and maintained by the Department of Planning relative to this request and testimony provided as part of tonight's hearing. Included in the items the department would like to enter into the record is also the city's master plan. I believe Mr. Newberry has a brief slide presentation that was done today, so it's a little snowy. It'll fit what we're dealing with today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mr. Newberry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you recall, during republic hearings, we provide a, a brief presentation with some exhibits and, um, photographs of the subject site. Uh, the first is an aerial photo. Um, excuse me. First is an aerial photo that shows the location of the property on the south side of St. Albans Road, um, to the west of State Route 109, 100, excuse me. Um, is the former Far Greenhouse. Uh, next is just a close-up aerial to show, um, the site. And then next is a survey and site plan, um, that shows the existing improvements on the site. The next are a series of, as Mr. Vunich noted, very snowy photos, but we braved the storm to just get the, some characteristics of the site. Um, this is looking to the west on, um, St. Albans Road at the entrance to the facility. And this to the east. And the next few photographs are just some of the improvements that, and structures that can be seen from the, the street. And that concludes the department's presentation. Again, we just wanted to get you familiar with where it's located, the access to the property, and then some of the existing improvements, uh, that are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Um, would the, is the petitioner in attendance?
They are. If you just give us a moment to invite them in.
Okay.
Bringing in Mr. Merz. He'll accept the prompt.
Okay.
And then if we could first ask Mr. Merz if there's anybody else he would like to have, um, join us on the Zoom.
Absolutely.
Yes, I'm not sure if Joe Summers is in here or not. He's the owner of Chiluli.
Thank you. Raised their hand, so.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before they start their presentation, I will be timing tonight and the petitioner has 15 minutes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Um, Mr. Merz, uh, would you like to go ahead?
He, Mr. Summers is just proposing to take the existing Far Greenhouse and convert it into his company that was located in Manchester. He's just hoping to relocate it out here on, on St. Albans Road. And he is not proposing any changes to the site.
Okay. Um, Mr. Summers, would you like to add anything?
Hey, everybody. Uh, this Joe Summers here with my son to the left, my wife to my right, my daughter here in the hat, and my, uh, wife's, why, my, my daughter's wife in the back there, and that's Abby. So we have Chaz and Lily, Tanya, Joe, and Abby all here.
All right. Um, is that all?
It's all the people that are here.
Oh, I mean, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
Oh, gosh, I haven't prepared much. I was hoping Paul was taking the lead. Uh, we're excited to move to Wildwood. We've been in Manchester for a little over 14 years. January would have been 15 years. Um, we're excited to expand our operation. Uh, we're very similar to FAR. They grew plants. We grow plants. They sold plants. We sell plants. So it's a pretty straightforward transition from, uh, a family that ran that operation for 72 years. a family that ran that operation for 72 years to a family that we're just starting out compared to that. 15 years to 72 is not much, so we're excited about having more space and serving the community. Something I am proud of, I'm sure it'll come up, hopefully it comes up, is we did get a recommendation from the mayor of Manchester as a, we were a good citizen in Manchester, and we'd like to be that in Wildwood.
All right, thank you. Let's hear, should we allow public comment now?
Mr. Chair, could I just add a couple of things?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, just so you understand the request before you tonight, plant nurseries and greenhouses are permitted by right in the NU Non-Urburn Resident District. So Chiluli, the business has been able to start operations there relative to the permitted uses. The plant nursery and greenhouses switching stock from the Manchester roadside to here. Tonight, the hearing is for the sales room component. Farr Greenhouse had a sales room which allowed them to sell directly to the public there, and that's the gold here tonight. And I just wanted to clarify for the benefit of those in attendance. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So because of the change in ownership, they need to apply for a new CUP?
Yes, and in this case, we had a little trouble finding the CUP for Farr Greenhouse, not saying anything was wrong. But when you're in business 72 years, it, a lot of things happened that obviously preceded St. Louis County zoning, and we want to make sure that when Chiluli opens, they open with all the approvals and never have to look back.
All right, sounds good. Commissioner Helfrey?
This is just the public hearing, so they'll have to come back for us for recommendations. Is that correct?
Yes, two steps after tonight, Ms. Helfrey, the department will prepare its information report, and then after that, the letter of recommendation. I may ask, since we have a long span between tonight's meeting and the next meeting in January, that we could do a combination report, meaning that it's in more of a letter of recommendation form. We'll wait to see what the public comments are tonight about it, but that's one of the things I'm thinking about.
So I just have a question. As I look at these drawings, the second one that, or the first one that was up on the, what, on the packet that we received, where it shows the red outline of the property, then it shows what looks to me to be some greenhouses that are outside that red line. So are those not on their property?
Well, the previous owners, the Bellroses, have the properties that adjoin it, and so they can expand it over. And for the most part, Mr. Bellrose, I believe, is here tonight, may be able to explain the arrangement, or Mr. Summers. That was a question we asked in our review of the preliminary development plan. But again, they've been there a very, very long time.
Right. It isn't, just isn't a clean transaction, I guess. It's none of my business. I was just curious. Thank you.
So if I can say what, what's happening there is the, those greenhouses that you see that straddle that line had actually been removed by the previous owner, so they're not really there.
Oh, they're gone?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I was just being nosy. Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
All right, Mayor Garitano, did you have something?
No, that was the question I had, was given the amount of time and the steps, were there opportunities where we could try to minimize or be more efficient? So Joe answered that for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Rubus?
The, the sales facility that you're considering is at the same sales facility that Farr had?
Yes, yep, that, the same sales checkout station that they used. We are planning.
Commissioner Helfrey?
Mr. Vunich, are you going to need a, a motion for us as far as being able to combine two steps into one?
Again, I would like to hear what the public comments are tonight, if there's concerns about certain issues that might delay. But if in the end you ask the commission feel comfortable, yes, I would appreciate a motion second and a voice vote to authorize the preparation of the letter of recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the commission? If not, Mr. Shot had some comments, and then it looks like we have one other person in the, in attendance with their hand raised, so I will go to Mr. Shot next, and then after that, Tracy. So, Mr. Shot, if you want, there you go.
Okay, yeah, no, I just wanted to say we fully support the new operation going in there. We're happy to see somebody take over, and it looks like a good, from what I've done research on. I believe it's a good group to be in here, and we're very supportive of it, so no problems on our end. We're right up the street on the opposite side of the road, so thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
And Mr. Chair, if I could, if for the, for the record, if we could do the addresses of the speakers?
Mr. Shot, your name and address again, please.
Okay, Terry Shot, 18903 St. Albans Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shot, hello.
Hello. Nice to see you. Thank you.
Nice to hear you, sir.
And Mr. Chair, I'll have Tracy with her hand up coming in.
Okay.
All righty, hi, everyone. I just wanted to say that so far, they've been really fabulous neighbors, and we're really happy to have them there, and I think this is just an absolute 360 win for our neighborhood. So this is Tracy Henson from 2708 Questover Canyon Drive.
All right, thank you for your comments. And Ms. Whitzig? We'll call you in next. All right, go ahead and unmute yourself, and then state your name and address, and go ahead.
Hi, everyone. This is Victoria Whitzig at 2701 St. Albans East Drive. We just wanted to chime in here and say that we are super supportive of Chiluli to join the neighborhood. We're right behind them on the backside of their property. We are stoked for them to be moving in and be neighbors with them, and hopefully soon to be customers of theirs as we start developing our property. And we're excited for them to be in the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. All right. Last call for any comments on this public hearing. Go ahead and use the raise hand feature if you want to speak. All right. Not seeing anything, and comments are pretty supportive, so look for a motion to prepare, oh, Mayor Garitano?
Thank you very much. Yes, you read my mind, and I'm happy to make that motion. So if it's appropriate at this time, I'd be happy to do it. It's, it's unique when you get a lot of neighbors that are very supportive of a proposal, and we have one here. I went to visit the site myself to take a look and got a chance to meet the Summers family, lovely family, and I, I feel that they're going to have a really nice family-run business, just like that's been there for, you know, our pre, previous owners that were there. So I'm very happy to support it. I think they're a great fit for Wildwood, and I think we should give them the support they need.
All right, so motion by Mayor Garitano. Is this a second by Commissioner Helfrey?
I, I have a second with, I think, an amendment, and that would be that we allow them to put both ratings at the same time, because it's such favorable.
And as maker of the motion, I'm okay if you want to put that in with the original motion. If, if there's no objection from anyone, then we don't have to have two votes, you know, an amendment, and then the main motion. We could just have one main motion on the floor that moves forward with the recommendation, and then what Commissioner Helfrey intends to add.
All right. Sounds good to me. Doesn't look like there's any objections. So, yeah, I remember when Mr. Summers came before the Planning and Development Review Committee and was kind of wondering if they actually got the property at that auction or not. Looks like they did. So, yeah. With that, all in, any other final discussion? All right, then, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, could we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay, all right. A motion to close the public here. Councilman Marshall, and seconded by Commissioner Helfrey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, public hearing is closed, and Mr. Summers, you had one last comment?
Yep, obviously, we're happy, and we just wanted to say thanks.
All right, you're welcome. Enjoy, have a good holiday, and we'll see you back in January. All right. Let's hear. So next on the agenda. Sorry, scrolling back up. PZ. Okay, oh, just labeled as a request from Wayland Custom Homes. So, Mr. Newberry?
A request from Wayland Custom Homes, Inc., care of Mike Wayland, 338 South Kirkwood Road, Suite 105, St. Louis, Missouri, 63122-6166, that is seeking a waiver to the city's requirements that all large lot, single-family subdivisions install packaged wastewater treatment plants in areas of Wildwood of the Wildwood community not currently served by public sanitary sewers, which, if granted, would thereby allow the use of individual household wastewater treatment systems for service on each of the proposed lots of record. This large lot, single-family subdivision is being proposed upon approximately 51-acre tract of land that is situated on the west side of Christie Avenue, south of its intersection with Manchester Road. St. Louis County locator numbers 24W610045, 24W520102, and 24W240015. Street addresses 27252731 and 2799 Christie Avenue, NU Non-Urburn Residence District. Proposed use, a total of 15 single-family dwellings on individual lots, are being requested on the subject tract of land, each being three acres or greater in size, along with the necessary private roadway improvements to access them. Bendick Estates subdivision, Ward 1.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I have two comments relative to this request before Mr. Newberry provides the slides relative to the presentation. First, in the subdivision and development regulations, any subdivision in the rural area of Wildwood, typically the NU Non-Urburn Resident District, that is seven lots, excuse me, eight lots or more, is required to have centralized wastewater treatment in the form of a plant. In that particular section of the subdivision and development regulations, there is a waiver clause, and that waiver starts with the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. Secondly, and more importantly, probably for some at tonight's meeting, there will be another meeting on the actual subdivision itself. The plating of the subdivision, the Planning and Zoning Commission must act upon the preliminary plat before it is submitted to City Council. So another meeting will follow in the weeks to come. And if there are any questions regarding those two items, the department would be glad to answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vunich. So, would, is, I assume the, yeah, looks like Mr. Wayland's in attendance. Do we want to call him up?
Mr. Chair, if we could just briefly do a slideshow, presentation with some photographs and identify the location of the site?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Newberry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, this is the location of the proposed large lot subdivision to orient you to it. This is Manchester Road where my cursor is. Old Pond School is here, 109 is here, and then the subject site is along Christie Avenue, along the west side of it, where some existing single-family homes are currently in place. And this is a site plan showing the proposed configuration of the lots and the, on the private street. And then just a few photographs to show access to the site. This is looking north onto Christie Avenue from the existing drive entrance that's in place. Next is looking to the south along the, the property's frontage onto Christie Avenue. And then this is across the street of a wooded area. And then next here, just views looking into the site. This is the existing driveway that accesses one of the homes on the site. And then this, this is just looking a little bit more to the north and west, where there are currently flat field areas there. And with that, that concludes the department's presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newberry. So, would it be appropriate to call Mr. Wayland up now?
Yes.
All right.
Give me a moment. We have Mr. Wayland and Mr. Von der Heid, his engineer record.
Okay. All right. Mr. Wayland, unless you want to give the podium to Mr. Von der Heid?
No, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, and members of the commission. We're here tonight to respectfully request a waiver of the centralized surface discharge wastewater treatment system. I was in front of you guys a couple years ago. We did a very similar project about a mile, mile and a half away as the, as the crow flies, called West Eden, whereby we had 66 acres and we had 12 new residential lots. And we did receive approval for individual wastewater treatment facilities. This property geologically is better, according to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, for these types of facilities. Our property will be served with public water from Missouri American. I just wanted to point out just a couple technicalities is I'm actually partnering with the Bendick family and Joan Byrd. The, Joan is a Bendick as well. They've owned this property since 1933. And it's been handed down. This is the second generation. They're all with us tonight. Former fire chief from Metro West, Mike Kraus is married to one of the Bendick daughters, and they're all online. If anybody would like to say hi, feel free, but we're very privileged to be able to, to propose this project. There's two homes on there. One belongs to Mrs. Byrd, Joan, formerly Bendick, now Byrd, and she's going to keep her house on a new three-acre lot. And then a home owned by the Bendick estate, beautiful home, log cabin with a, with an old barn will be preserved as well. So we would just like to respectfully request the waiver of this facility. We just think the individual treatment systems make the most sense for this project, and our engineer, Mike Von der Heid, is with us, so any questions, we'd be happy to address them for you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Von der Heid, do you have anything to add?
Only that we're following the existing ridge line of the site, so we have limited grading and the other proponent of- grading and the other proponent of it is we're saving 77% of the existing tree mass. So, we, I think we've maximized that to our fullest extent. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Um, are there any comments or concerns from the Commission? Uh, Commissioner Helfrey?
Mr. Vunich, would you please refresh my memory? When we dealt with, uh, the property and the others, uh, down the road on, on Highway 100 with the, the, uh, the request that Mr. Wayland was talking about for the individual septic systems as opposed to the, the one for the whole community? What was, what was the reasoning that we did that as opposed to having one communal one?
Uh, there are a couple of key components that were discussed by the Commission. The first was past history of plants that were required by the city. We've not had much success despite the MDNR, the Department of Natural Resources, and the city requiring maintenance. Maintenance has been mixed and varied. Some of the homeowners associations have done a good job, some have not. And when we were investigating the quality of that maintenance, we were a little surprised. And so, in lieu of having a homeowners association manage a treatment plant, then the case of West Eden, the Commission thought, okay, maybe it works better with each individual property owner having responsibility. To ensure it was done correctly, the second component was we require the highest level of treatment tertiary. We required a number of conditions relating to maintenance, uh, relative to the new future home sites and the owners. And we also required, in the case of West Eden, Mr. Wayland put up about, um, I think it was $30,000 plus dollars to ensure that maintenance would occur, and that would be to the homeowners association for that singular purpose.
So, um, I guess my question would be, would that be appropriate in this particular area as well?
If the Commission were to consider granting the waiver, I think those conditions in West Eden, which Mr. Wayland accepted, would be appropriate here. As Mr. Wayland mentioned, it appears that the soils are soil geology is a little better here. So, the, some of the risk that we had identified in West Eden at Millrose Road and Route 100 doesn't appear to exist to the level that it did there.
Well, am I, am I incorrect or correct? And I, I thought I remembered that at that time that we talked about West Eden, that the city, what, uh, the city's opinion was that maybe the, the individual, uh, septic system for the whole neighborhood were not the best for Wildwood. Is that, do I, am I remembering correctly or no?
When the, when the city incorporated, we did a long-term analysis of how wastewater is treated in the rural areas of the city. What we found is that individual household treatment systems, meaning septic tanks with drain fields, don't necessarily get the maintenance they need as well. And in fact, some of the statistics indicated that it could be up to 70 to 80, 90% aren't maintained on a regular basis, as recommended by the manufacturer. That led us to the plant. But what we found with the plant is that, that level of maintenance may be even worse in certain instances. And so, having a plant that receives effluent from, in this case, 15 home sites, that isn't functioning well, is a bigger problem in the Department's opinion.
Okay. Um, and then the houses that are existing around this property, are they all already on individual septic systems?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you for answering my questions.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Wayland may have more to add on the response.
Yeah, I see his hand up. Go ahead, Mr. Wayland.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Joe, for that explanation. Um, Madam Commissioner, I just wanted to, um, re, yeah, elaborate on that point. So, written into the subdivision documents for, uh, West Eden, um, the, uh, the Commission and, and the Board of Aldman required, uh, special escrows, uh, to be maintained for 10 years, uh, for the maintenance of these individual waste treatment facilities. St. Louis County, uh, Plumbing Department requires a biannual inspection and, um, and any corresponding maintenance on a septic system. However, they don't have enough inspectors really to police that the way they should. So, uh, with West Eden, it was required that we wrote that into our subdivision documents whereby, um, all of those, uh, individual wastewater treatment facilities will need to be inspected biannually and those reports, uh, sent to the homeowners association. And then, um, if, you know, maintenance doesn't occur, then the homeowners association has, uh, the right per the declarations to perform that inspection on their own, uh, and to use that, those escrow funds for any maintenance and then to go back and, uh, collect that from the individual with, with the assessment. So, I think, uh, the city did a great job of putting together a framework for us to, uh, ensure the best level of, um, the best level of, uh, management and maintenance, uh, with West Eden, and we absolutely anticipated doing the same on this. So, thank you for that question.
All right, um, Commissioner Rubus, uh, you put your hand up. Did your question get answered?
Yes, it did.
All right, thank you. Um. Do we have any public comments related to, uh, this proposal? Looks like we have one, Mr. Larson?
Yes. And I'll just reiterate while I'm letting Mr. Larson, and if anybody does have a public comment, please use the raise hand feature so we know that you'd like to speak.
Hi, uh, state your name and address and then go ahead.
Brian Larson, 1901 Country Point Court. I want to make, I want to make sure I'm clear that we're talking about the subdivision that's known as the reserve. That is what we're talking. I'm, there's too many along, well, uh, wrong, long St. Albans Road, so this is not.
The, this is the one south of Manchester off Christie Avenue.
Okay, sorry.
All right, um. Last call for public comment? All right, um. Seeing none, is, is there any more questions from the Commission? All right, seeing no questions, a motion to close the public hearing? Uh, motion by Commissioner Helfrey, seconded by Commissioner Rubus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, this public hearing is now closed. Thank you. And so, now we will go into our third public hearing, uh, which is basically the same request from Lombardo Homes, it appears. Mr. Newberry?
A request from Lombardo Homes of Missouri LLC for Research Park Drive, Suite 130, St. Charles, Missouri, 63304-5638, that is seeking a waiver to the city's requirements that all large lot, single-family subdivisions install packaged wastewater treatment plants in areas of Wild, the Wildwood community not served by public sanitary sewers, which, if granted, would thereby allow the use of individual household wastewater treatment systems for service on each of the proposed lots of record. This large lot, single-family subdivision is being proposed upon an approximately 55-acre tract of land located on the south side, St. Albans Road, State Route T, west of its intersection with State Route 100, FPNU Floodplain Non-Urban Residence District and NU Non-Urban Residence District. Street addresses 1604 and 168, excuse me, 18604 and 18700, St. Albans Road, St. Louis County locator numbers 24X440014 and 24Y640022. Proposed use, a total of 16 single-family dwellings on individual lots are being requested on the subject tract of land, each being three acres or greater in size, along with the necessary private roadway improvements to access them, along with a common ground area with visitor parking spaces. The reserve is St. Albans, subdivision Ward 6.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as the Department mentioned at the previous public hearing, this is a request based upon the subdivision and development regulations. Those regulations require any subdivision proposed in the NU Non-Urban Residence District of eight lots or more to be served by a centralized wastewater treatment plant. If not, there is a waiver process that the Planning and Zoning Commission participates in, and that is the subject of tonight's meeting. I want to emphasize to all in attendance, there will be another meeting relative to the preliminary plat where we will discuss in greater detail many of the characteristics of the subdivision itself. And Mr. Chair, with that, I'll conclude. If there are any questions, I'd be, uh, Mr. Newberry and I'd be glad to answer them. If not, Mr. Newberry has a very sharp presentation or prepared for the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mr. Newberry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll apologize in advance because the storm is really picking up when we were out at the site, so bear with us on it. We can get some better photographs for the next meeting if needed. The first slide is, uh, to show the location of the property, um, the south side of St. Albans Road, uh, west of its intersection with State Route 100. And then the next are just a series of photographs that attempt to show the character of the property from the roadway. Oh, excuse me, it'll go to this, the site plan showing the, the lots as they're proposed. And then the next, just a few photographs. This is looking east on the property. Let me can see the flat area in the front and then it hits the creek and up the hill. It's kind of common along the entire length of the property. Another view of that characteristic. And another. And then I'll just go back to the first slide and just note the, the length of the frontage of the proposed, the, the tract of land, uh, along St. Albans Road. And with that, I'll conclude, uh, the Department's presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newberry. And, and did I see that right? Is, are all those homes going to front directly onto Highway T or St. Albans Road?
I'll show the plan again.
Looks that way.
It, there is a, a private roadway here that we'll access.
Oh, okay.
Lots that run parallel to the, to St. Uh.
Oh, gotcha. I thought that, those were just easements, but they're, okay. That seems more like what I kind of remember when it came before Development and Zoning Review Committee. All right, um. Is the petitioner in attendance?
I believe so. I think Mr. Byrding is here with the engineer. Any of the petitioners are in attendance, they could use the raise hand feature if I'm missing you.
Um, Mr. Nance has his hand up.
I missed that. Thank you, Joe.
All right, um, Mr. Nance, uh, would you like to give your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Commission, Doug Nance at For Research Park, uh, St. Charles, Missouri, um, with Lombardo Homes. I'm here to present, um, the 16-lot, three-acre subdivision for, um, the variance of individual septics, um, for each individual's home. We have, uh, submitted our geology report to Missouri DNR who did get back to us and approve, uh, the site for individual septics based off of the information that was submitted to them. Uh, we also met with Missouri American Water, um, and got a plan together to extend water from Wild Horse Creek Road down to the site, uh, to provide public water for those individual septics as well. As you saw, the site does front St. Albans with 16 lots, um, with a private road that'll be off there. The septics, um, will be behind the houses, um, out of, uh, any, there's really no tree clearing on the site, staying out of all the trees and keeping the septic out of that as well. Um, there are two lots. I know some, there was a question about floodplain. There are two lots, 15 and 16, that there is a slight floodway on, but we'll be staying out of that completely with both the house construction and septic systems as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nance. Uh, Commissioner Rubus?
Yeah, that's what I was interested in is being in a floodplain that's not exactly apples to apples with the other one we approved, is, uh, is Wildwood got any, uh, heartburn about septics being that close to the floodplain?
With the Chair's permission.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Vunich.
Thank you. Mr. Rubus, there's several layers of regulations relating to septic systems, drain fields and floodway floodplain areas. The state has regulations, the county has the plumbing code, and we have prohibitions against disturbance within 50 feet of top of bank in the floodplain area, et cetera. So, on hold, if the Commission were to grant the waiver, we'd ensure that no floodplain is disturbed.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Helfrey?
Thank you, Chair. Maybe, uh, so, uh, Mr. Vunich, I have just a few questions, uh, on the, on site development plan that I'm seeing. It looks like towards the back of these properties at the base of that hill, it said something, there's an unnamed, unnamed tributary. There's a creek back there. So, um, uh, my question would be twofold. Yes, I think so. Oh, what, are these septic systems, could they have any negative impact on that creek? Number one. Uh, number two, if, I guess it's more than twofold. Number two, if the creek, um, has a flooding issue, which they did last year, right, if I remember correctly, over there, will that adversely affect the, um, septic systems? And number three, I'm assuming these are going to be, um, pretty nice homes. And so, uh, uh, I'm just curious if they will, if their septic systems are placed far enough back that those homeowners would be allowed to have pools or other items like that, uh, without having a problem because there's a septic system right in the middle of their yard? Um, cause you know, in our neighborhood, we kind of had that issue at the beginning, not with septic system. So, so those are the, my concerns, my questions with the septic systems. That's it. So, there were three. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Vunich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Helfrey, regarding the first, the placement of the septic system and drain fields and the impact on the creek, certainly if the systems aren't maintained to the highest level, then if effluent is discharged out of the drain field untreated or poorly treated, then yes, the, of the creek would suffer because these lots drain from St. Albans Road to the, which is north, to the south toward the creek. Flooding is a key concern, and our Department of Public Works, Rick Brown, the Director, does a wonderful job ensuring that floodplain floodway, where this is regulated in the, consistent with federal guidelines as well as our local guidelines. And so, I want to make sure myself, not only is the septic system and drain field, if the Commission grants the waiver, is, uh, is protected. the commission grants the waiver, is protected from flooding, but also the low sill in any of the dwellings, meaning that low opening, whether it's a walkout patio door, emergency access out of the basement if it's ad grade, et cetera. So, that is a concern, and as we work through the process, we'll certainly draw in the Department of Public Works. And yes, accessory structures like pools, et cetera, we certainly don't want to prohibit those on individual lots privately owned, but there is a point where we have to recognize, not every lot is suitable for a pool, and if we can make it work, we'll try, but first and foremost, environmental quality will rule the day here.
Well, and I don't disagree with that, that's why, that's why I was asking, because it looks like they're smack dab in the middle of those septic, septic system, septic ponds, looks like they're right smack dab in the middle of the yards. And I think last year, when they had all of that flooding over in that area, the comment was these, you know, these floods are happening more frequently because of the weather that we're having, so, especially because there's a creek there, I, that is a great concern to me personally, that we take every precaution that if that creek does flood again, which, you know, that that does not interfere with the septic or vice versa.
And again, what I will say is, is that it's a key component of any recommendation that would come to the department, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the flood, and will depend a great deal upon our Director of Public Works and the Department of Public Works. I can assure you, though, Lombardo Homes, a quality builder, will do everything it can to ensure that a system isn't inundated and then ultimately non-functional.
Okay, and just one last question, are all those other houses that are over on St. Albans Road, are they all on septic systems as well?
Yes, there is no public sewer from the metropolitan St. Louis sewer district.
Perfect, thank you so much, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jackson?
I'm sorry, I've misplaced my glasses, I've been trying to find them. How many acres per lot?
They are all, they are all a minimum of three acres or greater, and in this case, there is a common ground area at the westernmost end, and that's where they intend to put the mailbox cluster and the parking for the residents to access that.
Okay, I, I was, I was trying to make sure, because I thought the, I thought the state, state statute says you got to have a minimum of three acres to perk, and I thought they were changing it to five, but, okay, it's three, all right, that's my only question.
And, Mr. Jackson, that's a very good question. As you know, of late, we've been getting the soil and geology reports from Missouri Department of Natural Resources, and in some instances, they actually require a greater than three acre lot. We received that from Lombardo Homes, and all of the lots were identified at their current size.
Yeah, I could see the land down there, I would assume that one would be okay, but, okay, thanks, that's my only question.
Commissioner Depler?
Thank you, just had a, maybe a naive question. So, in a situation like this where each home would, you know, have their own septic system, and this is part of a development, would the developer be responsible for, you know, digging the individual septic systems, or would each homeowner be, you know, responsible for figuring out that for themselves?
I'm going to let Mr. Nance answer that.
Thank you, Joe. So, we'll engineer each system based off what the homeowners, how many bedrooms the homeowner is going to be buying. So, it'll be engineered and sealed by a separate engineer, and then we will contract a vendor to install that per those plans and per the county standards and city standards.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that's, that's helpful, because, you know, it seems to me like it would be a logistical nightmare if you had sixteen separate companies trying to, you know, do the same thing. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else from the commission? All right, I believe we have a comment in the City Hall, in the council chambers regarding this. Mr. Vunich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Albert, if you would like to speak on this matter now, certainly feel free to come to the podium.
Of course, we just want it to be farmland, we want it to be developed, and also, you probably need city sewers because they won't be able to afford to do it themselves and meet up those high standards. Okay, that'll be a lot more expensive for each home, and that's all I was gonna say.
State your name and address, please, for the record.
It's Albert Wolf, eighteen six five one, St. Albans Road, right across the street.
All right, thank you.
There's the farmlands, it feeds people, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and bring Mr. Larson back in. I believe this is the hearing that he wanted to speak on. When he said reserve, I was thinking the one right at one oh nine.
Sorry about that before, too many
That's okay.
waivers on suburbs and, I guess, and T. So, Brian Larson, twenty nine oh one, Country Point Court and Ward six. My home, I am both homeowner that is adjacent to lots posed as five and six, and I'm also the primary trustee for Country Point subdivision that is adjacent to many of the lots up to, up through about Lot six. My, my primary concerns are that, as was Ms. Helfrey, discussed the proximity to the creek, and if you look at the proposed lots and the proxy, the proposed location of the, that the sewer systems or the septic systems, many of them, about half of them are very, very close to the creek, and if you consider that these lots are likely going to be homes with it, probably four-bedroom homes, the lateral requirements of those septic systems are incompatible with the location of the proposed septic systems. You, it's, it's downward, and you need your laterals to essentially go downward if you're assuming you're doing a gravity-based septic type system, since no, since the soil systems and the proposed systems are not available for us to identify because they have to be designed according to the home, it's difficult to assess whether it'd be appropriate, but given the location, I don't see how they would be compatible, given the location that's listed on the plot. So, in general, I'm opposed to the, the septic place, placements as they're proposed on lots one, four, five, six, seven, eight, twelve, and thirteen. As noted, Ms. Alfie noted that the flooding has occurred repeatedly on those lots. It is technically outside the FEMA hundred-year floodplain, however, as been noted earlier, flooding has been occurring more often, and I've personally witnessed it flooding multiple times into those locations. Flooding is not compatible with those types of septic systems if you're talking about a traditional gravity system. So, that would mean that the septic systems, like, I, I, assuming they would have to be towards essentially T with laterals downward from there. That, that's my primary concern, that's all I have, unless there are questions or comments about that.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Vunich.
Mr. Larson, I thought I had the lots, but I just want to double check. One, four, five, six, seven, eight, twelve, and thirteen?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's from my layman's assessment of location, of course, but approximate, it, those are particularly close to the creek, and that creek is not small when it, it's, you know, it varies a lot, right? You go all the way from flooding to nearly dry at some times of the year, so it can be deceptive when you look at it, if you might, if you're just looking at the FEMA floodplain locations.
Thank you.
Mr. Nance, do you have a response?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Larson's comment about the septic locations and gravity, so, these are proposed locations, each will still have to be designed per the house, and that location will be determined by the engineer. And then also, the way the new engineer systems work, if, does require an engineered system based off the soils, they, gravity feed to the tank, and from the tank, they are pumped into the field. So, the gravity concern on those is, is really not a concern, and like I said, the locations of those will be determined, for the fields will be determined by the engineer based off those soils. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jackson?
Oh, okay, just a quick follow-up to Mr. Nance. Earlier, you said the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, I guess, approved of, of the septics? Is that correct?
They, they approved individual septics for each lot, correct.
Okay, they approved it, but they never looked at engineering?
They do look at engineering, but what I'm saying, as part of the final design of the house, when we have the house designed, we send that to an engineer who engineers the system and basically says how, what size tank needs to go in the ground, how big the field has to be based off of that, and does the field work in the location where it's placed, so.
I wasn't sure how that worked, when you said it was approved, and then you said it had to go to engineering, I was just getting clarification. So, you have a letter from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources that Joe Vunich asked?
Yeah, it's in the
That's all that matters, yeah, I, I missed it.
Yeah, it's down towards the bottom of the packet that was submitted with, along with, with the report.
Okay, thank, yeah, I got you, thank, thank you, I was just getting clarification.
No, you're welcome.
Sorry.
All right. Mr. Larson, I would come back to you, but this isn't really discussion for the homeowners, but there, this will come back before us next week, and you can, you'll be able to review the final report and respond at that time. All right, thank you. Tracy?
Mr. Chair, while Ms. Henson comes on, if other, if there are other questions or statements after tonight's hearing, we can certainly accept them at the department, and we'll use them for the purposes of our report, so thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, Mr. Henson, feel free to reach out to Mr. Vunich after the meeting. All right, Tracy, go ahead.
Okay, Tracy Henson, twenty seven zero eight, Quest Over Canyon Drive in Wildwood, or the property downstream of this. My concern is that with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, they actually tend, they don't care, and they don't place as much priority on unnamed streams or creeks. Wild Horse Creek is the one behind us, but our creek has just as much stream flow in high-weather situations, which I've lived here for about four years, and almost every year, we are clearing out the creek of logs and all sorts of debris that comes down and clogs our bridge. What I'm worried about is the addition of homes on this, and then a septic field behind it. You're already taking away from an area that, that water flows into from the direction of our canyon. I did send Joe some pictures of my pasture, which is kind of like a stream for where all this flows. Mine flows into a giant pond first, and then back, and then, and then over and, and over and onward, but, so it gets streamed, it gets kind of filtered out as water flows down the pasture. With homes, depending on the size of those homes, you're now going to limit the amount of water that is going to be absorbed and filtered out by the ground before making it to that creek. I'm concerned that by adding homes along Highway T, and then having that septic field behind, you're already increasing the storm flow of water that's flowing from those homes to the creek, because now they're not flowing into ground, and then you've got pavement, because now you're also adding another road. This is issues that we've seen in University City time after time. And then, that's going to flow into now a septic field, and now a septic field could potentially be washing down towards our, towards the subdivision that's Quest Over Canyon Drive, and then beyond to the nursery. As it is, our bridge that we have here at Quest Over Canyon Drive is sort of the big collector of all of it, because giant logs come down it, we're expecting even more after the recent tornado. So, those would be my concerns, and I wouldn't take a Missouri Department of Natural Resources letter of recommendation very serious, because they don't put emphasis or extra parameters of safety around unnamed streams and creeks, it's an issue I've run into before multiple times.
Thank you for your comments. And then, let's hear, Mr. Wolf, I think it was?
I'm done, okay.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Helfrey?
Okay, I hope you guys didn't have a collective sigh of, oh, not her again. Okay, so first of all, I'm curious if there would be any alternative options if, after we go through all of this, it's determined that, you know, maybe the septic systems, individual septic systems on some of the, some or any or all of these lots isn't working, what's an alternative option we have? Another question I have, since Tracy brought it up, is if, what, if it's an unnamed creek that's a problem, how does that get fixed? How do we rectify that? And I had, I did have one more question, and I can't remember what it was, because I'm trying to breathe without my glasses on. The septic systems are closed, they're not open ponds, right?
Correct.
So, I guess one of the questions I have is when, when Mr. Nance was talking about how they determine the flow or how large of a septic system they need, why do they, why do they use bedrooms and not like bathrooms and kitchens and things? You know, I mean, and, and, and if they sell a, sell a lot, and they sell a house on it, and then they determine the septic pond is going to be too large for where it is right now, then what? So, I guess those are my questions.
State statute, state statute sets the limit or the threshold, and it is by bedroom. I think it's a hundred and twenty gallons of wastewater per bedroom, and the assumption is, obviously, if you have the bedrooms that are occupied, and that's really the key. So, we use the state statute and the local plumbing code that, which is St. Louis County and the city of Wildwoods, it's the same, so bedroom is the measure. In terms of alternatives, certainly they're all, if the commission is inclined to support a waiver in this particular instance, there's all kinds of systems, individual household treatment systems, there's gravity, as was described, there's drip irrigation, there's all kinds, so I don't know if that's an alternative, certainly we can explore that with Lombardo Homes. I'm confident that they'll, there's, they'll select a system that matches the quality of the house, but we can certainly explore that. And the unnamed creek is a good point, that's the, that's the unknown factor right now. Storms have been, let's say, a shorter duration, but a much, much greater intensity. We've experienced flooding in areas where we've not seen it previously over the years, so, as I say, that's where we'll spend a lot of time with Lombardo Homes, making sure their engineering and our review of the engineering supports whatever we do.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, I hate to interject, but on Zoom, we had a Mr. Wolf on Zoom raise his hand. I don't know if he, I asked to promote him in, and may have had a little more confusion.
Okay.
Yeah, he raised his hand again, if so, if I can let him in.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, I assume, I was thinking the Mr. Wolf in council chambers was the same Mr. Wolf that was on Zoom, but apparently not.
And Mr. Wolf, one more opportunity, if I send you a prompt, you'll need to accept it to be able to use your microphone and video.
I'm done speaking, okay? All right. Hello?
And the, Mr. Wolf on Zoom is in attendance, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you hear me at all? Ironically, I am that gentleman's brother.
And I inadvertently hit the raise hand button. So I apologize. Was a surprise to see him in the in the audience as much as anybody else. So I'm just a bird on a fly on the wall right now. So I'm just listening. We do represent the there's a house at I'm Luke Wolf, my mother's house was at 18651 San Albans Road. We're literally right across the street. And very interested to see what the very interested to see what the progress here is on this development. We do have a difference of opinion on whether we believe this this development should move forward. So I won't air those discussions, but I'm just trying to understand what's going on.
All right, thank you for your comments and clarification. Appreciate it.
Apologies for the mix up.
No problem. Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thanks for indulging me, Mr. Chair.
No problem. All right. With that, a motion to close the public hearing. Commit motion by Commissioner Helfry, second by Commissioner Clayton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, motion is closed. Thank you. All right, and let me get back to my agenda. Oh. Wrong, too many screens here. All right. So next on the agenda is PZ two dash zero three. Mr. Newberry?
Mr. Chair, I'll be reading that.
Okay, all right, Mr. Vunich.
PZ two dash zero three amended Tom and Leslie North care of Stephen and Abby North, 16828 Manchester Road, Wildwood, Missouri 63040. A request for a change in zoning district designation of this 0.4 acre property that is located on the south side of Manchester Road, west of Village Hills Parkway. Street address 16828 Manchester Road, St. Louis County locator number 24V630341. From the C A Plan Commercial District Parenthetical Ordinance Number 1750 to the amended C A Plan Commercial District, which would then allow the use for allow for its use as a single family dwelling, along with retaining the existing provisions for professional offices, as well as extending the timeframe for its connection to public sanitary sewer in lieu of the individual household treatment system that currently serves the site. Proposed use professional offices and a single family dwelling. And this property is located in Ward Eight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mr. Newberry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you have before you tonight a draft letter of recommendation for the requested amendment to the an existing planned commercial district. Again, this was the blue house on the on the south side of Manchester Road that was previously an insurance office. The structure or the property is currently under new ownership. The new owners indicated that they wish to use the property as an option to be a residential property as well as provide for the extension of the requirement for the sanitary wastewater connections. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this item at its November meeting and acted unanimously to support the the two separate requests. First being the permitted use being added for residential use. And the second for an extension of the requirement for the connection of the sanitary sewer. But caveat to the second component is that there's a provision in the proposed conditions and ordinance language that the connection would be required if the surrounding properties were to develop and when they develop in the future, that it would be required to be connected. And with that, the draft letter of recommendation was luck of the action of the commission from its November meeting and then it's in the appropriate form to be acted upon and forwarded to city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newberry. Discussion or motion, Commissioner Helfry?
I'll make a motion to recommend that accept the recommendation of the city.
All right, thank you. It's second by Commissioner Clayton. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call, roll call vote.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Chair Beatty?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Garitano?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Did you have something else, Mr. Rubus? Okay, I saw your hand go up at the.
It's a quick trigger hand.
Gotcha, that's fair. All right. Let's see here. Next on the agenda, PZ 13 dash 25.
PZ 13 dash 25, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission care of Department of Planning, 16860 Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri. A request for the consideration and issuance of a subsequent recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding its consideration of a moratorium on the processing and or issuance of authorizations and associated permits for the demolition of historic elements as defined by the city's historic survey. Due to the city's Historic Preservation Commission completing Wildwood's first historic preservation plan is intended to provide guidance and steps to assist private private owners of these assets and preserving them through the rehabilitation, restoration and reuse. This action would be in place for no longer than eight months from a date of the city council's action on the approving ordinance for the same. All words.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the commission at the November meeting of this body, the Department of Planning presented a recommendation report seeking the support and authorization from the Planning and Zoning Commission to install a moratorium temporary in nature on the demolition of historic assets that are listed in the city's survey. Excuse me, inventory. The Planning and Zoning Commission endorsed that action and tonight a letter has been prepared in the form necessary to forward to the city council that action of the commission. The city attorney has provided the ordinance that would be presented to city council as part of the recommendation and action of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that is attached to the letter. Mr. Young is in attendance tonight and certainly if there are questions regarding the proposed ordinance, I would defer those to him, our expert. But if there are any questions regarding the letter in its final form, the department would be glad to try to address them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Commissioner Rubus?
Yeah, at our discussion at the last month's meeting about this, this phrase, this action would be in place for no longer than eight months. Would that mean that if the historic preservation plan is approved before eight months, that the moratorium would end with that rather than this timeframe?
Mr. Rubus, in in the presentation by the department, it noted that the rationale for a moratorium is the plan will offer in principle opportunities for us to create partnerships, better partnerships through grants, tax credits and incentives. And so the plan is the key and that's why the department felt that eight months was sufficient. Because we are under a timeline with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources State Historic Preservation Ordinance to complete it.
All right, Commissioner Jackson?
Great question, Mr. Rubus. Motion approved is presented.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Clayton. Any further questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubus?
Yes.
Chair Beatty?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Garitano?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, PZ 10 and 11 dash 25.
PZ 10 dash 25 Luxury Villas at Latitude North 38 care of Latitude North 38 LLC. 11605 Stut Avenue Suite 102 Creve Court, Missouri 63141. A request for a change in zoning from the NU Non-Urban Residence District to the R6A 4,000 square foot Residence District Town Center Neighborhood General District for 6.9 acre tract of land that is located at the southeast corner of Etherington Road and Crestview Drive. Located numbers 23V210140, 23V210151, 23V210021 and 23V22022. Street addresses 2442, 2448, 2454 Etherington Road and 16928 Crestview Drive. PZ 11 dash 25 Luxury Villas at Latitude N38 care of Latitude N38 LLC, 11605 Stut Avenue, Suite 102 Creve Court, Missouri 63141. A request for a planned residential development overlay district PRD in the R6A 4,000 square foot Residence District Town Center Neighborhood General District for the same 6.9 acre tract of land that is located at the southeast corner of Etherington Road and Crestview Drive. Located numbers 23V210140, 23V210151, 23V210021 and 23V220022. Street addresses 2442, 2448, 2454 Etherington Road and 16928 Crestview Drive. Proposed uses a total of a maximum of 44 single family attached dwellings in clusters of three, four and six units along with associated street and pedestrian network, off-street parking areas, required public space and stormwater management facilities. Both of these items are located in Ward Eight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Tuesday afternoon of this past week, the department received a letter from the attorney representing the petitioner asking for a postponement. In the letter, the petitioner's representative noted that the agenda and report didn't have immediate availability, that one of the clients that he represents was out of the country. And finally, the holiday weekend all led to a decision that it would be difficult to be prepared for tonight's meeting. In the Planning and Zoning Commission's bylaws, it notes that if a request for postponement is received prior to the Thursday before the date of the meeting, it is somewhat of an automatic. So tonight, the department is requesting this matter be postponed to the January meeting. If there are any questions or comments, Mr. Newberry and I would be available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Can I get a motion to postpone, please? Motion by Commissioner Rubus. Second by Commissioner Depler. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, motion is postponed until January. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda. A request for the to approve the 2026 P and Z calendar.
I'll take that one, Mr. Chair.
All right, Mr. Newberry?
Thank you. To the Planning and Zoning Commission, every year we the department and other city team members put their head together and come up with the overall schedule for the city's public meetings. This component is related to the Planning and Zoning Commission's proposed schedule of meetings. And we just present it to you, ask you to review it and take action to adopt it so that you can get them on your calendars. And Mr. Jackson, I'll anticipate your question. I'll send out the calendar invites before the end of the year. So you can have them on your digital calendar. So again, this schedule is consistent with what has been done for many years. The first Monday of the month, except for the instances in January where we push it to the later in the month due to the holidays. And then the two Tuesdays that we have a meeting due to the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday and the Labor Day Holiday. So again, the department's just requesting a motion second and also to adopt the calendar for 2026 and we're available for any questions.
All right, Commissioner Jackson?
I would like to make a motion to adopt.
All right, motion to approve, second by Commissioner Helfry. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, thank you. And then scroll back up. All right, and then next on the agenda is the update on the progress relative to the 2025 work program. Mr. Vunich, or?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. In 2019, the commission adopted a revised and updated set of bylaws. One of the new additions to those bylaws was the adoption of a work program for each commission year. In this case, 2025. The department has always at the last meeting of the year kind of provided an update of how we've done relative to the work program items. In the report that's been prepared for tonight's meeting for the commission's consideration, I would note that in this year we had 86 agenda items over the course of the 12 regular monthly meetings. That is an increase of 26 items over 2024. So just doing our basic services as established by the ordinance and the commission, the commission's responsibilities. We saw a sharp increase. Also, we spent a great deal of time, as you know, working on new sign regulations for wall types. And more importantly, electronic message centers. We had a number of work sessions with assistance from Randy Burkett, Reed Burkett Lighting Design. And ultimately, those were presented to the city council in November. And the bill for each of them was read into the record. And next Monday, it is scheduled for final passage. Also, we did something with regards to quick service restaurants, drive-through facilities for certain properties on Route 109. It took a great deal of time and discussion, but we ultimately made a recommendation to enhance Route 109 and Route 100 with additional uses if possible. Also, you've been asked this year to participate in the update of the master plan. And as you know, we are on meeting 12, I believe, starting in the latter part of January 2025. So all in all, those items that were on the work program that were high priorities, we accomplished some of those at medium and low priorities, we did not. But as I said, we had a very busy year. If there are any questions regarding the report and anything that the department's provided in its presentation, Mr. Newberry and I'd be glad to answer them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. I'm kind of surprised that our agenda items went up this year. It feels like it's been quieter. Maybe just fewer controversial ones?
And that may be the case, but I also think the Development and Zoning Review Committee is kind of weeding out some of those and you're asking questions early on so that when we get to public hearings or to presentations, seems like we have a plan or proposal that's closer, but that's just a guess on my part.
Gotcha. Anyone have any other questions?
Mr. Chair, no actions required and Mr. Newberry and I would thank you for hanging in there with us over the year.
No problem. Thank you. And next is our 2026 plan.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our bylaws, as referenced earlier, we are to adopt a work program for 2026. The department has provided you a draft work program. And the department just wants to highlight a couple of items. The first being the master plan. We are obliged under state statute, the city charter and local code to update that every 10 years. That will be a priority over the next several months, starting 2026 and may go until early summer. Additionally, we have a number of anticipated conditional use permits for electronic message centers if approved. As you know, several of the schools and the Monarch Fire Protection District are in waiting, hoping that that legislation passes and we expect to see quite a few of them over the course of 2026. Additionally, the watershed erosion task force sent to city council recommendations relating to projects. One of those projects, the basin retrofits, received favorable action from the Planning and Parks Committee of City Council, eight members of the 16-member city council. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be intimately involved with those. We also hope to have to you the new tree manual. We have it in draft form. There is a committee of city council, a subcommittee that is assisting the department. And that will be presented to you. And then finally, we have the city's first historic preservation plan that was mentioned as part of the moratorium. And that was mentioned as part of the moratorium discussion. That is to be completed sometime in twenty twenty-six. And as with any planning document, it will be before the commission. So tonight, the department is presenting the proposed work program. It's identified at least six of the components that are very high to high priorities. And the department is available for any comments or questions regarding the draft work program. If acceptable, the department will request a motion and second and action to adopt. If not, we can certainly wait till the January meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Helfrey?
Well, Mr. Vunich, I, I'm, I'm only asking this because I just don't know where else to ask it. When, uh, are we going to, uh, uh, address the, uh, the data centers?
Uh, the data centers will either be on the January or February Planning and Zoning Commission for public hearing. And the public hearing, and I'll consult with the city attorney and city administrator greater on this. Is to either amend the industrial district to ensure that they're not an allowable use. Or create a prohibition. I don't know which is more legal. But certainly I'll talk with the city attorney and city administrator, but I'd like to have it at our first or second meeting. And just so you know, the January meeting is the third Tuesday, but we follow up two weeks later with the first Monday in February. So we're going to get to it pretty quick.
Okay. And so I, I'm grateful for that because you know, that's been one of my hot button items. And just out of curiosity, why? Well, okay, I'll hold it to our conversation. Okay. Thank you. And then I'll make it and a, uh, a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Helfrey. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Clayton. Um, let's see. Oh. Um, I would just glance at number eight. Um, the special circumstances overlay, that's primarily those. Um, parcels around the Bliss property, correct?
Yes, but there are several other parcels of ground that Mr. Young and I have discussed. Some have extensive floodway and flood plain that would preclude really any development unless we really take a very, very hard look. There's also a couple of properties I know off the top of my head where the topography is just so prohibitive. Or we have one of the few remaining mature tree stands that have been in Wildwood for. Hundreds of years, so to speak. So we're going to try to get those to you so you can take a look and see what you think.
Okay. Yeah, I, I noticed you said several sites are anticipated. So some of them you've had, I guess, interest in.
Yes, or they continue to be, uh, disturbed and we'd like to get them under the scope so that there is a process before we even. Before they even begin anything.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, any other questions? Or discussion? All right. Um, all those in favor, say of approving the work plan for twenty-six, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. Motion passes. Thank you. And I believe that is everything. So, uh, if no one has any.
One more thing. It was our last meeting before the end of the year, and I think Mr. Newberry and I would like to wish you all the very merriest of the holiday season. And be careful out there if you're driving tomorrow, early morning in the snow and ice.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Same to you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Likewise.
All right. Motion to adjourn. My motion by Commissioner Helfrey, second by Commissioner Rubus. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
Take care.
Holidays, bye.